Okay, we'll call the meeting to order. It's Wednesday, April 3rd, 2019. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll have our pledge allegiance first. Everybody can stand.
The pledge allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will have roll call, please.
Brad Hent.
Here.
John Brewster.
Here.
Pete Hamel.
Here.
Greg Gills.
Here.
Tom Eggers.
Here. Okay, we'll have the approval of the agenda set forward.
So moved.
Support. Roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Okay, number two on the item is public forum.
This is a time set aside for the public to give comment to the council for things that are not on the agenda. If anybody has anything, then please step to the podium. I see none, hear none. We'll move on to the consent agenda.
I would like to have just a little bit of discussion on the minutes. There's a correction that needs to be made.
Okay.
Do that separate or how you want to handle that?
Sure. We'll take that out and we'll do that after the consent agenda. That's okay with you, Ange?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion, please, to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye. Okay, Greg, on the minutes?
Yes, it's under the, it's not really an article, but it's the discussion and voting on the community block development grant. It lists all, eyes all. I abstained on that.
You did.
I'd like to have it. You could change that on those two.
Yep. Okay, with those changes, do we approve the minutes? Can I have a motion?
So moved. Support.
Roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye. Okay, there's nothing under old business, under the new business. We have a Mid-America easement request, and I believe this is on, I should say, we'll open up the public hearing on that. Have we received any comments written?
No.
Okay. So then I would entertain the motion to close the public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye. Okay, we have grant the underground electrical easement for the wastewater treatment plant to Mid-America, and we have that map in our packets. Do you have any discussion further on that, Todd?
Not really. I mean, this started probably a year ago and with an intent to grant, and that's the blue line on the color map that we provided you. But since then, I've been working with Mid-America, and we come up with a route that I agreed to that was less intrusive. That's the yellow line on that map, on the left side of it. So I'm, it's installed.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Okay, thank you, Todd.
I'll make a motion that we grant the underground electric easement to water treatment plant to Mid-American Energy as presented.
Discussion. Roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye. Okay, next item, consider pay request number three for 16th Street project and construction modifications with the DOT. That pay estimate is for $123,669.14. You have any comments on that, Todd?
Sure, the contract modifications are for a number of things. There were some culvert that was misrepresented in the plans. It was, on the plans, it's 21-inch culvert, but when we actually exposed it, it was 24-inch. A few minor things like driveways. We had in the specs for a 5-inch driveway removal and replacement, but many of the driveways, when we tore them out, were 6-inch driveway. So I had instructed the engineer and contractor to replace them at 6 inches because I wanted to give the people back what they had initially. Oh, what else was in there? There was, oh, C4, our M4 mix. So the, and I should have caught this ahead of time, but the engineer had specified C4 concrete to go back in the driveways, but I didn't want people to be without the usage of their driveway for seven to 10 days. So I had them put in an M4 concrete, then we could open the driveways back up to traffic in a couple of days. So it was just convenience-type things that I thought were worthy of the money that were there. There are some underpayments for some air content and that kind of sort of things that were slightly under contract. As far as the pay estimate itself goes, I guess I just want to bring up that the road has some issues, and there's a reason you haven't seen a pay request in months from them. But last week, I did meet with the engineer and the contractor, and we've come to a resolution to the issues. The two issues I have is there's surface segregation on the top coat, and I'm concerned of moisture and not getting the life out of the road that we should expect. The other thing is, is we had specified a 2-inch cross slope on the road, and there's a lot of places it's at 1% or maybe even slightly less. So we didn't get as much crown in the road as what we had specified. I do have confirmation, written confirmation, from the contractor, though, that they agree to come back and edge mill the road and then put a 1-inch overlay over top of it, and it'll probably be a little slightly greater than 1 inch in the middle to actually achieve our 2% crown. The reason the edge mill is important is then we don't have to go back and redo all the driveways. So the side height will stay the same, center will come up, we'll have the crown, and we'll have the improved drainage at specification is what it should have been. So they agreed to do that yet this spring to an agreed schedule. I don't have a date as of yet. Questions on that? Does that make sense to everybody?
One question I have, and we had a penalty clause if you're not completed in so many days. I know they went over on that. How did that settle out?
So in one of the previous pay requests, we deducted just over $20,000.
And that is reflected?
That's still reflected here. Yep. Yep. So even with paying this, with retainage and what's left to pay, we would still owe them $106,577.37.
Which we would hold until they finish the, this spring, then?
Um, I don't know that we would hold the whole 106, but we'd at least hold a portion of it. Yeah.
So you had mentioned, Todd, about adding the 2% crown. How is that going to match up to the manhole?
So they'll have to readjust the existing manholes.
Okay.
That'll be on them as well to come back and raise them up. So if the center of the road comes up an inch, they're going to have to cut them all out and bring them all back up an inch. But I, it's, crown is important on a road, and that road especially important. You know, we spent some money on drainage, putting some tile in on the south side of that road that wasn't there before, and if we don't have proper crown on the road to get the water off of the road, we're going to, we could be back in a very similar situation to what we had before, so.
And it was our spec, correct?
It was our spec. The spec, the spec had not less than 2% cross slope, and they failed to meet that.
Then once you drive down, you could see puddling in the center after rain and that.
Yeah, and you know, that gets tricky, too. That's why the crown is so important. I mean, Sheldon's ground moves a lot already. I'm just right around town looking at the roads. Frost has them heaved up and pushed down, and that's why they're a little roller coaster right now. So you know, if we don't get the 2% crown and that road moves at all, you go back to ponding.
Yep.
And ponding will just make the road bed in worse condition, so. It wasn't a hard conversation. I mean, the contractor was good to work with. They agree they need to do something. So I think we're okay. It's just, it's an inconvenience. I mean, we'll have to schedule an edge mill and another overlay. It'll cause, you know, some more traffic inconveniences, but it should be short time, couple or three days to complete the work.
Further questions? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
So moved. Support.
Listening again. Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Next item, second reading of the ordinance amending the code of ordinance of the city of Sheldon by amending provisions of section 115.4 pertaining to cemetery rates. That would be going from regular burial location from 350 to 375, and opening graves from 120 to 120, or $200 to 225, and 400 to 425. And we've had no comments or concerns since the last meeting.
Correct.
Okay, so then, then we could waive the third reading and make this the final reading if we so choose to.
I would like to move that we waive that third reading.
Support.
Discussion. Okay, we'll have a roll call, please.
Brewster.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Okay, item D, permission to burn tree brush pile at the city lot north of town on
the west side of Washington Avenue and Monroe Avenue. Todd, you have a little conversation on that?
Sure. We quit burning the tree dump, I'm going to guess, 10 to 12 years ago. It's been quite some time since we burnt the tree dump. And the reason we quit burning the tree dump is because we were able to negotiate a contract with Brian Kolback to come in and grind up the tree dump at no cost to the city, as long as he could have the material, and then he would then take it off, and he was actually selling it to ethanol plants, and then they were using it to burn instead of natural gas. It really works well for both sides. Unfortunately, the last couple of years, the market for the wood chips has been down, and so there's no interest for him to come in and chip because he doesn't have a market for the chips. He came in last year a couple of times and ground us a couple of loads just to get us out of trouble, but the pile has just grown and gotten out of control. And in speaking with him and other wood chippers, because he's not the only one I've talked to, they don't see the market turning anytime soon, and we need to do something because we need to have room for some trees. So what I would like permission to do is to work with the fire department and find a day in the near future, whether it's an afternoon or a Saturday or whatever we negotiate with the fire department, where we light the thing up, we burn it down. It'll be one heck of a big fire. They could be there to help us control it if needed, and hopefully, in the meantime, the market will turn around. If we just, we could just hire somebody to chip it, that is an option. My guess, you'd spend somewheres between $35,000 and $50,000 if you wanted to pay somebody to come in and chip the pile. That's why it's always been nice to get the freebie. We've probably been spoiled the last number of years. So that's what I would like to do. I guess it's open to comments whether you approve of that or not approve of that, or you want us to look for a different method. I don't know what that would be, but.
I think it's something the fire department can help you with. It's probably going to be one of those spur-of-the-moment's when we have the right weather, just going out and doing it.
Did much of that float away during the flooding or not?
No, Pete, it all stayed.
Okay.
Yeah. Flood didn't do us any favors there.
Nope.
It will make some of the bottom hard to burn because it's obviously saturated.
Yep.
It's not ideal, but I don't have another option right now, unless you want to spend the money on the grinding. I really don't.
Go ahead.
There's no EPA restrictions on it or anything?
So the only restriction, and I found this out a number of years ago, is that we will have to haul the ash to landfill once it's, once it's done burning. Apparently, ash is a hazardous material. I was unaware of that until a number of years ago.
Okay, thank you, Todd.
So that's consensus, then, burn?
Well, I'll move that we grant that permission.
And I would second that.
Okay, discussion. Roll call, please.
Hent.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Okay, number E, change order number seven for the wastewater treatment plant. That change order is in the sum of $13,210.
No.
10 cents. Oh.
$38,000.
Oh, I was going the city's responsibility share.
Right, but the actual approved change order will be the larger number, Brad.
Okay, sorry. I was just going off what our responsibility was. If you wanted to explain that, Todd?
Sure. So the actual increase, the change order is an actual increase of $38,201.98. What Brad was relaying to is that the city's responsibility is going to be, and I don't have actually that, but what's your number, Brad?
$13,210.98.
Yeah, so I'll explain how we got there. If you look at the actual change order and you go down, there's line item numbers. If you get down to line item number 70 is where we'll start. The rest of those are previous change orders. So you get to line item number 70, the first item there is some UV building trench grading. There was some miscommunication. That actually started out over $5,000, and I negotiated it down to the $37.60. The flow meter tariffs would be our responsibility. The sump pump skata is a D-Duck of $463. Item 73, there's some de-watering floor drains. It's an $882 increase. Essentially, the engineer did not specify what we, the city, wanted during design, so they're eating that $882. The next one is the largest one. It's note line item 74. It's an increase of $29,109. Essentially, what happened is DGR's our engineer on this project, and a subcontractor of theirs underdesigned the return heaters. So that building in that particular room has 12 air changes an hour. So every hour, we're changing over the air in there 12 times. In an effort to recoup some of that heat, there's a duct system. You come back, you reheat the air, you put it back in the building. Those heaters were undersized, and they were already on-site before it got caught. So if it would have got below, like, 10 degrees, we wouldn't have been able to keep up in the building with heat. It would have went down to actually ambient outside air temperature. So because the heaters are too small, that's one part of the cost, but then you also have to upsize all kinds of other electrical components and whatever. By the time you get all that done, it costs $29,000. So all but $5,000 of that is being paid by others. It'll be, it'll be coming back to us paid by others. And the reason I agreed to pay for $5,000 is because if the heaters would have been priced or sized correctly in the beginning, that's cost we would have consumed anyway. So I felt it was fair to pay the $5,000, but not the additional 24. Also in your packet, you'll see a letter from DGR explaining the costs that they're going to cover. It says they're going to cover, it's actually going to be a subcontractor of theirs that's really in material to me, but it is stating in here that they will cover $24,109 change order. So with that, and the last couple of things on there are actually changes that staff asked to get included into the contract. So with that, I'll entertain questions if you have any.
Any questions?
I'll just, one comment in case you're wondering. Even though it seems like we're on change order number seven, and there's been a lot of things, I think to date, we're at over $5 million of the work done, and it's city responsibility for change orders. We're at about $40,000, so we're less than 1%. I'm reasonably happy with that. It's not like we're getting change ordered to death.
No.
Or it's not like there was a lot of things that got missed. It's just a really enormous project.
And that's, yeah, that's a big project to undertake.
A $10 million project. I mean, if we can hang in at 1% or less, I won't be too upset.
Okay.
Move to accept this change order.
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Okay, this is the first reading of the ordinance amending the code of ordinances of city of Sheldon, Iowa by amending provision section 63.04 pertaining to the speed limit on South Second Avenue and South, that's south of 16th Street. That would be going from 45 down to 35 if I'm correct, and then the same way coming back into town, 45 to 35?
And 55 to 45.
And 55 to 45. And that's to help maintain her with their employees exiting, entering and exiting the expansion of their facility, and that was on their request. We discussed that briefly at our February 20th meeting about a driveway entrance, and then they also requested that speed limit to be changed. So I would entertain a motion of the first reading.
You can waive second. There's no issues.
There's no issues. The council would like, we could waive those.
I move that we waive the remaining readings.
I'll support that.
Okay, any further discussion?
Ange, just for clarification, can you have the minutes show that they're moving to approve the ordinance and to waive second?
Do you have that? Okay, roll call, please.
Gills.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Okay, next item on the agenda is resolution authorizing the redemption of outstanding general obligational capital loan notes, series 2013, dated May 29, 2013, and I believe that is payment of $2,600, or $2,265,000. Is that correct, Sam and Ange? And that would be paid at the end of June?
Beginning of June.
Beginning of June 1. Okay. And how many years early is that? Is that early or not?
Yes, I think it's five years.
Five years early?
If I remember correctly.
Solid. That's a good thing we're paying that off ahead of time?
Yes, it is.
Any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve that resolution?
So moved. Support.
Okay, roll call, please.
Hamel.
Aye.
Hent.
Aye.
Eggers.
Aye.
Gills.
Aye.
Brewster.
Aye.
Okay, item H, update on the HC lane building. Sam, do you want to lead us through that part?
Thank you, Mayor. On Friday, the 29th, at 10:00 a.m., Eric Nedermeier from the state Building Code Inspector's Office and Phil Hesner from the state Fire Marshal's Office joined me and Todd Yule, Public Works Director, Kurt Straub from SCDC, Brad Hent from the Sheldon Fire Department, Jonathan Hints from O'Brien County Environmental Health, and Rod Funkert, Property Manager. We spent most of our time in 324 to 326 Ninth Street, which is the corner building, the former Wolf's Building, and then we also spent some time in 329th Street, which is currently leased by Sweet Puddle Jumpers. At quarter to four today, we received a preliminary report from Schloepfelt Engineering, who Rod Funkert has retained on behalf of the lanes and himself. And I have passed out copies to the council member and council members and to the media, and I can send it out later upon request. I'm just going to take a moment and read it if this is okay.
Yep, go ahead. Because it's just brand-new?
Yeah, it's brand-new, and this is really important. So he says the building at 324 to 326 Ninth Street is generally in good structural condition with the following exceptions, and this, by the way, is from Wayne Schloepfelt, who's a structural engineer out of La Mar's. "The west end of the south wall has been compromised," he says, "and no longer provides adequate structural support for the south wall. Approximately eight feet of the very west end of the wall has been damaged due to water damage, and it appears water damage is from poor drainage from the pavement areas surrounding the west and south sides of the building. Freeze thaw action has made the exterior face brick to pull away from the building while the interior brick has slowed into the basement. The damaged area is located below the first floor joists. Because the floor joists for the first and second floor and the roof joists are supported by the east and west walls and not the north or south walls, there is little concern for a collapse of the floor and roof structure. What is of concern is the weight of the brick of the south wall above the damaged area. There is moderate chance the wall or portions of the wall could collapse and fall to the south into the alley." My recommendation, this is again, recommendation from Wayne Schloepfelt, his recommendations for this area include removing the wooden deck and surrounding pavement areas reconstructed to provide drainage away from the building. I recommend that not only the wall that is damaged be removed and replaced, concrete block is acceptable for replacement material, but also the window wells and wooden basement window framing and coverings be replaced with concrete block wall. I would also recommend temporarily supporting the wall with shoring until permanent repairs are completed. Doing this support system will greatly reduce any hazards to alley traffic. Final point, an interior column has been removed to accommodate the interior counter space. The column supported a beam-to-beam connection that supports the second-level floor loads and part of the roof load. Although the column has been absent for an extended amount of time, the stability of the connection is completely dependent on not having any occupancy on the second floor. Because the future use of the building could include using the second floor again, I recommend that the column be, should be replaced in its original location. In lieu of a column, a beam can be installed to transfer the load of this connection to the east and west walls. It would need to be carefully designed to accommodate all of the potential loadings, and it's signed sincerely Schloepfelt Engineering, Wayne Schloepfelt, professional engineer." One final note is that, before I yield to Todd for further opinion on this, is that he says, Wayne Schloepfelt says he's providing this before he's completed the remaining portion of the report, but because of the time-sensitive nature, he wanted to have his preliminary findings to us right away. A full report will be sent, and it will be available upon request, but it will not change his findings, and it will just provide more background information and photos. So my reading of this, and I'll yield to Todd in a moment, is that we should proceed with recommending to the council closure of the alley directly behind the building. Todd, do you have any further thoughts on that? That's all right.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, that's what I get out of it as well, Sam, is that he's saying there's potential of some bricks sloughing off in that corner. It doesn't appear like he's afraid of the entire wall going, but some. It'd be nice to get him to clarify that, which we could follow up, but it's kind of, I would agree.
I mean, he says there's moderate chance. We're aware of the potential liability. I think we need to move to close that alley.
The whole alley or just the west?
Just the portion of it.
East portion.
Yeah, the east portion of it.
I would agree.
You know, he doesn't say it's going to stand up. You know, he doesn't say it's going to stand up. He gives a moderate chance, and I think we now have a liability that we know about. I think we need to address it.
Let's listen to comments.
It's a public safety issue, correct?
And I did receive a call this afternoon from a business owner in that area that was concerned about blocking the alley off. So I do think we need to also put some timeframe on this so he gets it done, because it's going to be an inconvenience for those businesses that use that alley for truck traffic and different things.
They can at least go on the other side of the, the Old Eagles Building though, can't they?
Yeah.
So that's helpful. But yeah, I think that, I don't think we ought to proceed with closing that alley temporarily.
Do we have any discussion from the audience? I think we have a gentleman that's, if you want to step up to the podium and if you state your name, address, and...
Yeah, my name is Wayne Knapp. I'm the owner of the Old Eagles Building at 914 Fourth Avenue.
Okay.
Okay. There is a, the drive, I have six parking places on the south side of that building. All right? The drive adjacent to those six parts are within my property lane. Okay?
Okay.
You start driving trucks through that, that thin-skinned asphalt, you're going to have a major problem. It's not going to hold up.
Yeah.
And I don't know how you're going to divert them off my part over to your alley, which is approximately 50 feet to the south.
South. Yeah.
And you have liability, I have liability now as well.
Yeah.
You know?
Okay.
It's okay. So I prefer not to have that traffic routed on that, it's very poor asphalt. I have problems when your snowplows come in tearing up mine. So, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
Mm-hmm.
Any other comments while we're on the subject of the alley closure?
Well, based upon his comment, I even support more that we move the process along, get it finished up.
Is there...
If we can put a timeframe to it.
Mike, is there a way we can put a timeframe to get this moved along faster, that they take action in their building?
Well, we're going to have to take a look at Wayne's report, compare it to what we've learned from the state inspector. His ground is to move forward under Chapter 145. 145 can, Chapter 145 is a dangerous buildings code, and that can require, under certain situations, some remediation by a property owner. So we'll have to take a look at what our options are.
Okay.
And we have a preliminary report from Mr. Schlopfelt with any clarification, as Todd mentioned, exactly what he means by a few of his comments. So that's where we're at right now.
Okay. Corey, you got something?
Corey Augersma, just as a resident, these buildings have been neglected. We've heard it, we've seen it in the paper. There's 47 buckets upstairs catching water. I don't know whose liability we're talking about, but I hope it's the owner's liability and not the city's liability. And that's where it should be.
Yep.
And the timeframe for these other business owners or for citizens wanting to use that alley should be very, very small. They've neglected it for 100 years, it's time to do something about it.
Thank you, Corey.
I would note for the record that if the city is able to proceed under Chapter 145, and if action is not taken after appropriate due process, the city does have abatement rights, which then potentially can be assessed back to the property owner. Situations we've been in before, and hopefully we don't have to get to that point, and the right thing is done soon, but that is what the city's potential remedy is.
Okay.
He does mention the possibility of temporarily supporting that wall with some shoring. I wonder how quickly that could be done.
I guess Rod isn't here to answer those questions.
Yeah.
So, you know, we could, if he got it shored up, then we could open the alley back up. If there's a way we could get him to get that done in the next X amount of days, so we can get that alley opened back up.
And if you, if you move to close the alley, I want some pretty clear direction on what those parameters are. Keep that in mind when you're thinking about it.
You mean, as far as how you're going to close it, you mean?
Eh, what distance.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hi, I'm Lori Anderson. And as Corey said, some of these buildings have fallen into disrepair. It seems to be something that we visit on a regular basis. In my many, many miles of travels, one of the things that I ask little towns when I go in there and I see vibrant downtown areas, how do you do this? And one of the suggestions that has come from several small towns is that there's actually a fee charged to the business owner for an empty building. And that fee is accumulated for times such as this. And that the fact that this actually had a property owner or a property manager that allowed this type of neglect is appalling. And it's very unfortunate that this family really relied upon his oversight, and that was neglected. But it's just a thought to add in some sort of, it motivates building owners to put a business in there and not charge ridiculous rents that are difficult to pay for business, you know, small, small-town businesses. But yeah, we shouldn't let this happen in the future.
Further discussion, council?
Sitting here, it would seem to me that two weeks would be enough time to get that shored up. Now, that may be, I mean, we haven't had a lot of time to think about it, we've just gotten the reports, but I think it could be done, if you really want, if we're serious about this. Everyone's serious about this.
I wonder if we have the provision of providing the temporary shoring and assessing it to the owner? I don't know what capabilities we have.
I think we need to give him an opportunity to come up with a plan, but it has to come quickly.
Quickly and with dates of when he's going to get it accomplished.
And yes, he has to go out, find a contractor, get bids, and so on. I think we want to, I don't want to take a hard-line approach and not try and work with him. I don't want to alienate the relationship, because that's going to be a big hole, a big hole in the corner if we can't work together. And if all possible, I think we need to work together on this and give him, you know, and be reasonable but also firm. So two weeks for that, and then a timeline for the other two, and then we can talk to see if, you know, once he has a contractor lined up, find out from him what the timeline is. But it needs to be done sooner rather than later.
And keep in mind that with these time limits, there's an opportunity for the owner to request a hearing, so if a hearing's requested, that time has to be granted.
Okay.
I mean, that, I understand the desire by all parties to move forward quickly, but we can't ignore due process.
Correct. I think, I think it's clear, we just want to push hard and push fast. And since this is a public safety issue, there's no reason for us not to do anything but that. So whatever we have available to us, we should exercise it.
Comments over here? What action would we like to take on this, council members?
I think we close the alley immediately and push for getting that wall shored up so it can be opened again soon, and look for a plan of action, again, as quickly as possible, while allowing due process to take place.
Are you going to set a specific time limit or just give him adequate time? I would like to see a time limit.
I would like, I would say two weeks, unless there's a good reason not to. But at this point, that, we'll put that on the table, get that shored up within two weeks.
Back on the agenda at the April 17 meeting.
Yes.
And that's, you're making that as a motion?
I will make that as a motion, yes.
Okay.
The area directly behind the building.
Well, in light of what we've heard from the adjacent property owner, there's some, I guess I'm going to defer to Todd's judgment on that, but...
It doesn't really matter. To me, the area directly behind protects the alley. If we go further than that, you're going to start blocking off where people park behind their buildings. And there is a car that I think typically parks right next to that building, there's a little notch in there. And they would be parking on, I guess, some of Mr. Lane's other property. I'm not going to say a brick won't fall there, but they wouldn't technically be in the alley at that point.
Not necessarily. The property directly behind...
If you could, you want to step up to the podium?
Sure.
That way, then the...
Yeah, I understand. Please.
The people in the audience that watch it on YouTube can hear.
You're right. Sometimes there's two cars over there, because I've noticed them. Okay, but the property directly behind my back door, as soon as I step out, is city property. It's not mine.
There's about six inches.
Yeah, I mean, and there's a car that parks there sometimes, I got a dumpster back there, you know, et cetera, et cetera. The only thing that, that my property line is the six parking spots and the adjacent drive next to those six parking spots, so...
You own about 30 feet south of your building?
Approximately, yes.
I just measured it.
Yep, yep, yep. I agree to that.
Okay.
And like I said, my concern is if you divert the traffic, where are they going to go? Are they going to be now driving across essentially private property?
No, they'll have to come across to the other alley.
Yeah.
Is there a lot of truck traffic that does come?
You know, sir, I, I don't know. It's UPS, it's, you know, single-axle delivery trucks. I mean, your, your snowplows are a lot heavier, and your tractors that you come in, and I applaud the city for plowing my, for the last four years, I appreciate it. But it, it does, there is damage due to the weight.
I'm glad they stay out of there. They were doing...
No, I said I applaud. I complimented you first. I threw out a compliment, I said, "Thank you."
You're welcome.
But, but, you know, you started getting, you know, a 14-ton, 18-ton truck may not do anything, because of the way it's distributed over the wheels. I just want to, you know, be aware of diverting...
So when you say the back of your building, you're talking the west?
The west side, yeah. As soon as you walk out.
But doesn't the, I mean, there's an alley that runs all the way through by, next to the museum. Couldn't you, I mean, can you barricade off that portion so that people aren't traveling, traveling on that, and then come around? I mean, it's going to make it difficult for alley trucks and such, you shouldn't still be able to make that work.
So are you proposing that I barricade the alley directly behind the buildings in question, and then also barricade around the west side of Mr. Knapp's over to the other alley, and then follow his property line completely to the east all the way back to the sidewalk, so that nobody can drive on Mr. Knapp's property? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Is that a workable solution for you?
Yeah, it's, that's, I don't know what you would have. I don't want to be a stick in the mud.
Yeah.
I just want to know, you know, that I have to...
He, he's not wrong. His parking lot's in terrible shape.
Uh-huh. If you can live with that, can we live with that?
If that's what you're directing us to do...
It's an inconvenience, but it'll still allow access, right?
Yeah, absolutely. Accomplish that. Be a barricades, and I don't know, I might actually have a guy, if that's what we're going to do, we may string up some snow fence or something like that, other than put up 50 barricades. Won't be the prettiest thing in the world, but...
Well, we're talking two weeks, hopefully.
So consult with Wayne Schlopfelt.
Schlopfelt.
Again, too, as far as placement of the barricade, if, you know, what we're thinking, if that's reasonable in terms of the potential for damage.
Clarification, Wayne Schlopfelt has been retired or retained by Rod Funkert.
Yeah, he's been retained by the city.
But he also works for the city or not?
Somebody else in his firm has helped out the city on the civil side.
We contract with lots of engineering firms.
Yeah. I mean, I don't want to spend thousands of dollars to get an opinion on that, but an opinion...
No, I, I can't accept that as an answer. Tell me where you want it, that's what we're going to put. I don't, I don't, I don't think it's fair for us to go reach out to Wayne and say, "Wayne, how much alley we got to block off?" That doesn't seem, unless he wants to say that on Mr. Funkert's behalf or the Lane's behalf, I don't think we should get him to say that on the city's behalf.
Recommendation on Mr. Funkert's behalf.
Correct.
And actually, the Lane's behalf.
I'm okay with that, and then...
We can evaluate if he says, "Oh, notwithstanding my report, you don't need to do anything," then you can say, "Well, but the report also says X, Y, Z."
So, so Greg, if, if you say the area directly behind the building plus outline of Mr. Knapp's property, and then you could say, "Unless Mr. Funkert's engineer says that a larger area needs to be done, then you give us permission to block off the larger area." Is that reasonable?
Yes. I think so.
You're going to affect more businesses the further you go, that's...
I know, and so we want to try and limit that as much as possible.
My understanding of the motion is not less than what you just described.
Correct.
Okay.
Immediately behind the Lane buildings, and then we're also going to do the west side of Knapp's property and the south side, correct? Of barricades on that.
Yeah, I'm not looking at a map, but I'm relying on you to do it right now, what you're saying, but...
See what?
Yeah.
So he was talking, this is the two buildings, right? And they didn't leave behind, would be from that one to that one. What Mr. Knapp was talking about is that black line there is his property. So then you would block this off and all the way back there, so his traffic comes through here, can't go, just turn, go to that alley and then out.
Yeah. Yes, I think so.
Protect his property, I saw it, yeah. He may want to show the other guys that as well, but the other, the other consideration is that, all right, just have single access to the alley. Yes.
First, mayor recommended... So this is the way we block, just block out the alley. And then you have barricades from here all the way to the street.
Go ahead, say that's your understanding.
Okay. Just trying to sort this out, Greg. So the motion is to authorize for two weeks the closure of the alley directly behind 324 and 326 of Ninth Street, including the footprint for parking at 914 Fourth Avenue. This will be on the November 17th agenda for an update.
April.
Or April 17th agenda.
Yes.
Everybody clear the way I, the motion was made? So I have a motion, do we have a support or second on that?
Second.
Any further discussion? I'll entertain roll call, please.
Kent.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Heels.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Brewster.
Hi.
Next item is authorization of commencement of a dangerous building process, and that's on 324 and 326 Ninth Street. Sam, any further on that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Understandably, there's a fair amount of due process involved in some, in a situation like this, and we're asking for council authorization tonight to proceed with the commence, commence with the dangerous building process. We'll have an update for you in, in two weeks, but it gives us the opportunity to, to move forward with the official notices, which will include official notification of the owner who's in California. So we'll need to find a process server and show that we're serious about moving forward and that we expect respectfully that the owner of this building is ultimately responsible for addressing this issue and not the city.
So do we need a motion to approve that?
Yes, sir.
So moved.
Support.
Further discussion on that process? No, I'll entertain motion, Ange.
Roll call.
A roll call, please.
Brewster.
Hi.
Kent.
Hi.
Eggers.
Hi.
Heels.
Hi.
Hamel.
Hi.
Okay. Next item is the city manager's report. Do you have any?
Thank you, Mayor. All I have to say is I've received good cooperation from a number of landowners who have requested to please not park in the, in the area between the sidewalk and the street or on front lawns. So we're seeing some success with that, and want to remind people that this is against city ordinance, and it also puts city service lines at, at risk with the freeze-thaw cycle and the weight of vehicles on, on front lawns. So I want to thank people for cooperating with that, and the rest of the report stands for itself. Thank you.
Staff, have any comments?
I do, just two things. Last meeting, Ange Missin mentioned that we, flags are on sale for spring cleanup. I guess one, one, one thing that we didn't mention is that we are going to do spring cleanup differently this year. We typically split the town in half and do a west half and an east half cleanup. This year, we are going to attempt to do the entire community in one week. So the entire community will be picked up the week of April 20. So the entire community will be picked up the week of April twenty-nine. So we'll see how that goes. I really think we can get it done. And I think it'll be less confusing for people, "Am I on this side of Washington or that side?" And I just think it'll help. So we're gonna give it a try. The other thing I wanted to mention is last fall, the council approved, uh, a number of no parking signs for the downtown district. And I told you that we would have them up before the parking ordinance was, uh, out of effect for the winter. I failed, but we only have two left to put up, and they'll be up tomorrow. So the Ninth Street, the three blocks of Ninth Street, the two blocks of Third Avenue, and the two blocks of Fourth Avenue that you guys approved last fall, all the no parking signs will be up by the end of day tomorrow. All got?
Okay.
When are, when are our flags?
File.
On sale till? How long are flags on sale till?
April twenty-sixth, three o'clock.
Pete? On my right? I do have one thing. Um, we're getting into the spring season, and people are doing cleaning up. And people start fires. We do have an ordinance that says you cannot burn leaves, rubbish. And we have a lot of people that burn those in their so-called recreational fire pits. That is not allowed, if I remember what the code reads. So you are not allowed to burn that kind of stuff in your fire pits. That's all I have. Now on to the main agenda tonight, uh, the appointment of a mayor. Kind of have a outline of what we talked about doing. We're gonna allow each candidate, um, and those are Fred Grine, Wayne Barhona, Bill Engel, and Greg Gills. Or Bob, excuse me. I don't really want to say Bill. Bob, sorry about that. Each candidate, we're gonna allow them three minutes to speak. And then after that, um, the candidates have spoken, the council members can ask questions. And then we'll allow each council or each candidate to have a three-minute closing, um, statement. And then the council members will, uh, vote. And Ange and Micah will tally those votes. And then we'll come out with the appointment of a new mayor. So, and we'll start in the order that we received the letters. So the first one will be Fred Grine, and I will have my three-minute stopwatch when I find it.
Is this location fine here?
That is fine.
Good afternoon. My name is Fred Grine, and I have lived in the area for forty-six years. My wife, Artis, and I raised two girls who have gone on to college and have now returned to the Sheldon area to raise their own families. So I still have a stake in making Sheldon a place for families our first. I've always had an interest in public service. During my years of employment at what is now Ag Partners, watching our girls' activities as they were going through school, involvement in church, I felt I didn't have enough time to commit more responsibilities. I now have retired for a few years and feel it is time to give back to the community of Sheldon. I feel qualified to fill the position of mayor because during the thirty-eight years I was at Ag Partners, I was responsible for working with employees either as a leader or alongside. I also was in contact with the public on a daily basis. I learned to be a problem solver, create a budget, and uphold the company policies even if they were not popular. My involvement in church taught me to work with volunteers and how to present ideas and programs. Throughout my seventy-one years, I've learned that I am responsible for, for, with the help of God, how my life is going to turn out. I watched my father raise a family of five children on a dairy farm milking thirty cows both morning and evening, even when he had to, even when he had to drive the family car between the house and the barn because he also suffered from muscular dystrophy. My brothers, sisters, and I never went hungry, were able to get the education we wanted without any government assistance. I'm not interested in becoming mayor because I am displeased with the way things are being done or issues that may be on the horizon. In fact, I've seen great, many great things being done in the city government and schools. I want to be part of that legacy. With that being said, I ask you to appoint me the next mayor of the city of Sheldon.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Wayne Barhona.
Well, first off, I want to thank the council for the time to do this. Now, this is the introduction part, but I look at the council up here, and everyone's sitting up here. I know you. I look around the room. I know just about everybody here. And it's important, this knowledge is important, and it's important to be known for something. And Sheldon, over the years, has been known for a number of things. Name of, namely, quality of life, the low tax rates, low unemployment, a thriving business community, and then a populace that has their true spirit of service. Look around, we see times have changed a little bit. While we enjoyed a steady tax rate for quite some time, costs go up, and we have to deal with it. Well, our city manager here gets the unpopular position of having to draw us out of it. And that includes raising taxes. To couple that, we also probably, it's waiting in your mailbox, if you have not been home yet, is a letter from the accessories office telling you that overnight your values are that much higher. Well, probably good if you're a real estate agent, but kind of hits the pocketbook a little bit. And then, of course, we know that coming right up after this meeting, we'll have a discussion about a franchise fee, which is what? Another thing that's going to happen that's going to cost us money. And I also think about looking at our councilman up here. During the last election, we had one councilman run unopposed and one that had to be wrote in. Now, it's easy to get kind of in the mire about this. But what I see is the quality of life still remains. This is still an awesome place. And what I see on the horizon is we do now have a spirit of community. We do have people that are ready to stand up and engage. And we have a young community out there that is ready to get involved. We just have to reach them. And so I feel that I am the man to help bridge that gap. And I can feel the excitement. I can feel it within me. I could feel it in this room here. People are excited about the great things that Sheldon has to offer. And as with that, I offer my steadfast resolve and purpose and humbly request that you appoint me the next mayor of Sheldon. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Wayne. Bob Engel.
Thank you. I'm gonna kind of talk. We got a nice delegation of citizens here. And that's who I'm proposing to represent. So I'm gonna speaking to, uh, probably most of my words will be directed towards them. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to voice my candidacy for the position of mayor. My commitment to this office would represent the taxpayers of Sheldon. The budget is the most important duty of the council. And over the next nine months, my number one objective would be to work with the council, city manager, and most importantly, our taxpayers. Within the budget, there are state regulations that we have no control over, no choice, just compliance. I want to concentrate in the areas that can be adjusted where possible. Let's take a look at a few. There have been studies done by both Iowa and Iowa State regarding the TIF program. We have experts out there that could come in and assess our TIF program. Then we could have a community-wide meeting to inform and update our citizens. They deserve it because they are paying for it. Our original TIF district was established in nineteen eighty-nine. Once established, TIF districts were to be standalone. Now, we have all of our TIF districts combined into one through amendments. To start with, let's go back and do an assessment on that first TIF district. What was the cost? What did we accomplish? Was that it? Did we accomplish what was intended? And have the returns been as expected? Our event center, we have it. It's a done deal. More than likely, it will take additional tax dollars. Again, the taxpayers deserve transparency. The crossroads development, we've had a bad winter. Our streets have suffered unexpected loss. Depending on the budget, we may need extra money in street funds and perhaps temporarily step back from some other projects. In closing, I would like to comment on my forty-three years of banking experience, including during the banking and farm crisis of the eighties, and my work regarding budgets, cash flows, workouts, and regulations. My experience working with numbers would be a real asset to the council, and especially working with our city manager, which I am looking forward to. Again, I will closely work with the city council, city manager, city staff, and our citizens to accomplish what I have set forth in this presentation.
Bob, your three minutes is up. Thank you. Greg Gills?
Good afternoon to you, my fellow councilmen, staff, as well as all of you as guests. I'm glad you're here. I wanted to begin today by talking about decisions. Decisions, decisions, decisions. Every time we come to a council meeting, that is a major part of our job. Many times, those decisions are relatively easy. Approving a SCAT applicant, deciding when to hold a public hearing, or a motion to adjourn, for example. But there are other times when those choices we make are not so crystal clear. The outcome of a decision bears much weight, and its impact will have a dramatic effect on people's lives, with positive results for some and perhaps negative ones for others. Your decision today about who to appoint as the next mayor of Sheldon is an important one. But I don't think you'd make the cut if we were to look back and compile a top-ten list of the most important council decisions for two thousand nineteen. You may be surprised to hear me say that, but here's why. The running of this community does not fall on the shoulders of any one individual. Margaret Mead once said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world." Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has. And for the last twelve years, I have had the privilege of observing that happen in this community over and over again, initially as a member of the SEDC board and now in my current role. Whether it was representatives from the city and partnering with NCDC to build a rec center and later a school district to develop an athletic complex, staff working to clean up trees after a major ice storm, or elected officials and local residents working together to replace the city manager with just the right candidate. Committed citizens have pulled together to change this community, not only to change it, but to make it better. This sort of thing happens all the time in Sheldon, and we do it very well. The end result is a better place for each one that calls this place home. If you choose to appoint me as your next mayor, one of my top priorities will be to maintain the level of cooperation that has allowed this city to prosper. The development and growth that has happened over the last ten to fifteen years would not have occurred unless committed individuals worked together to make it happen. I pledge with God's help to serve the citizens of this community with integrity and respect. My service to this community on the board of the SEDC and as a councilman gives me a solid foundation to continue to move this city forward, not by myself, but together with those who share that commitment. I will work hard to provide an atmosphere that will build community, both literally and figuratively. These are the challenges that lie ahead of us.
Greg, your time is up.
The future of Sheldon is bright.
Thank you. Okay, uh, question and answer time, I guess, for the council. Questions for our candidates on my left?
I, I...
Go ahead, Pete.
I guess I have a question about, we talked about options. Right now, we have the option to appoint someone to fill this position. If we fail to do that, then it would go to a general election. Am I correct in that?
Special election.
Special election. Special election, I'm sorry. If we would, since Greg is on the council, if we would appoint Greg as the interim mayor, what does that do to his council seat?
If, um, Greg would be appointed, accept the appointment, and be sworn in, at that time, he would have to resign as the councilman. I believe he's representing the at-large ward. And then there would be a vacancy in that seat. And at that time, the council would have, again, the duty to fill that vacancy, either by appointment or through special election.
Okay, and, and the appointment that we would make today would be until next, this coming November, correct?
That is correct.
At which time, there would have to be a special election that would be tacked on to the normal election?
Well, in, in November, on the general election date on the ballot, would then be the office of mayor.
Okay.
And there's some, there's some council positions up to November, correct?
Yes.
So it'd just become the, part of the normal election?
And then, to further that, if in fact, we would then appoint a councilman, what term would they serve?
It would be a similar situation. Appointed until the November election. And then in November, that seat would be open. And depending, I believe, I believe that this seat is going through December thirty-one, two thousand nineteen?
One, three, and Greg's at-large seat.
Okay, and so the difference between the mayor's position...
Is it one?
Yeah, mayor was last term.
Okay, sorry, my bad.
So it'd be myself, Pete, and Greg.
The difference between the mayor situation and this particular seat is that the mayor's term is set to continue for two-plus years. So the person elected in the November election would complete out that term. However, if a seat on the council becomes open, and it, then that person, when, when you fill that seat in November, that's then gonna fill the regular term.
Yeah, it'll be a four-year term.
Just for clar, my clarification. If we hold a special election for the mayor's position, that the person who would be elected through that process would fill out the standing term of the current, of the, of the mayor who resigned?
That is correct.
Yes.
If in November, we have a normal election, will it then be for a four-year term?
No.
No.
Okay.
They'll serve till twenty-twenty. Two, yeah, twenty-twenty-two. Do we have any questions for the candidates?
Yeah, I do, um, Mayor. And this is for each one of you. It's the same question. Based upon what we do, we're just talking about the fact that if we appoint someone today, it's for nine months. Is your interest in the mayor's position go beyond nine months? Or are you interested only in filling the appointment period of nine months until the general election?
My interest would be to fill out the complete term. That's today. I mean, that's my interest today.
So you would run then, again, in November?
Today, I would say yes.
Okay. Wayne?
When I moved to Sheldon, I was only gonna stay.
Wayne, would you use some mic, please?
When I moved to Sheldon, I was only gonna be here two years. So whenever I try to put a timeframe on anything, I have to think about that particular scenario. And I would say, now that this is my home, I have no intention of leaving. So I would have every intention of filling out that, that term.
Um, I think, Pete, you called me and asked me that question. I think, Pete, you called me and asked me that question.
I called everybody, yeah.
And first of all, I think this is the practical way of doing it, to fill this thing for nine months and do a vote here and have it done. I do not think spending $3,000 or $4,000 for a special election is going to go very, I would rather give it over here to the street department to be able to have a little extra money and they're filling some holes around town. But, but realistically, and I think in, on, in the paper, you said that you have not made up your mind yet what you're going to do beyond come election time. So I, what I'm pledging here is I'm pledging nine months, and I will, the one guarantee that I will give you is that I will, by September 1st, I will make it public whether I intend to go on with this thing or whether you, I am going to step aside, and that will give you ample time to get the citizens together to get a good candidate.
Good, thank you.
Other than myself.
Thank you.
Good clarification, Bob.
Some time ago, I told my Sunday School class that I, I had Tricia there as a speaker, as the mayor, and I told them when I was introducing her, I would never want to run against her, because I feel I would lose, probably have lost badly. And it's been a joy working with her, and I admire the way she ran this city in her role as the mayor. When it came out that she was going to be accepting the pavilion position, the thought process started, I wonder if that should be something I should consider. And I thought about it some. I had people come and encourage me to put my name in, and through a series of events, it led me to actually submit my name. And I figure, if nothing else, this will be a great opportunity to test drive the position. My concern is the workload. I run my, I have a business that I have to run, I have other commitments, so the workload is my biggest thing. But at this point, I'm looking to run as ma, to be the mayor, to continue on, yes. Now, that may change if I find that it's too much, or I don't like it, like I did do being a councilman, but at this point, my intention is to continue on.
I've got a question for all four of you. Guess I'd just like to know some of your past experience with, connected to the city and the city government, and then your ability to chair the meeting and your experience with that. So I guess we'll start in reverse order.
I've mentioned 12 years I've been involved either with the SEDC or now even seven years, three months as a councilman. Prior to that, I was actually an inaugural member, a graduate of the class that this chamber in the city offered at times, in developing leadership, and that's several years ago. But that actually planted the seed for putting me where I am today. I have also had involvement on numerous boards that currently sit on the Board of Villages Northwest. I served on an international board for what was at the time CRWRC, then World Relief Committee. Still is probably the best board I've ever worked on. I held an executive position with that. That was based in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I've served as, two years I served as chairman of the SEDC board. So I've chaired a number of meetings over the years, school board, local Christian school board, council, church councils. So yes, I have a fair amount of experience in leading meetings like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, over the years, I'm, I'm going to have to think back a little bit, but my time in Sheldon, I have also, back then, it was called the SIDC, but I was on that board, I served as chairman. I was on the REC Commission, and I served as chairman of that. And that was during a period of time, probably a couple of years after the pool, the indoor pool was built, and there was some severe financial difficulties there, and they asked me to, to join in with some others to serve on that REC Commission. And it took us about a year to work out of that financial difficulties, but we got the job done. I've been treasurer at the Sheldon School for a period of time. I was on the Centennial Committee years ago, and I was the events chairman, and I was on the Soybean Days Committee for three years. I served as chairman of that, so, and I was on the Booster Club and served as chairman of that one year also, so I've sat in a few seats.
Good, thank you.
So I serve as the secretary treasurer of Sheldon EMA, which doesn't chair a lot of meetings, but we do, we do our fair share of helping out around the community. I serve in a particular chair at a morning show, so I know how to wrangle wild animals. I talked to Tricia. She was very insightful about her experience here, kind of deciding back in '09 that she was going to take the leap. And I said, "Well, how did you overcome the lack of experience in getting into this brand-new position?" And she said, "Well, here's the deal. You shut up and listen, you get your feedback, you make sure that you are a visible and vile member of, viable member of the public, and then the train starts rolling." So while I will freely admit that the number of boards, chairs, committees, and so on and so forth, it's probably not my, I don't have a very long resume, as far as that goes, but what I can tell you is that I know how to talk. My wife would definitely agree. But I know how to listen, and I know how to take control when necessary. So there is your long-winded answer to a very short question.
Thank you.
As far as chairing committee meetings and stuff, I, I've done a fair amount of that over the years at church meetings. I also was in the program that Greg talked about, developing leaders for Sheldon. I think I was probably in the same class he was, it was one of the first ones. I have always had a, a strong desire to be in, in politics. I, are not politics, in, in city government. I, I feel that I've, stay abreast of, of, of the issues that are here in Sheldon, and that's all I've got to say about it.
Okay. Any other questions?
I got one, Brad. The Crossroads Pavilion Events Center was a large investment, and it has been a little bit of strain on the budget. Was it a good investment and, and why? The, go ahead, Fred.
I feel it's a very good investment. It, it puts Sheldon on the, on the map as a, it's a destination. I've, I've heard just here recently that we are getting usage out of it from quite a ways out. It's not just, just local people, it's, it's other ti, other community, people from other communities coming in and using it. I think it's very, very good, especially where it's located, where it can be seen.
Thank you. Wayne?
Probably a tough pill to swallow when you know that you're going to go into something and lose money. But I like growth. I have seen the growth here. I have participated in the growth through the help of the SEDC, got me to where I am today. So I think it was a great investment, and I think it was that kind of foresight into growing our community that is helping us reestablish our seniority as being one of the destinations in Northwest Iowa to both work, live, and raise a family.
Okay, thank you. Bob?
Good question. I think the event center, probably if it would have went to a vote of the people, and if they would have had an opportunity to vote on it, and then if we build it, we would probably have a lot more support. So that would be my answer to that.
Driving by on Highway 60 and seeing that event center out there, it's a beautiful thing. I was involved from the early stages of planning, and it was rewarding to see it actually come to reality. It has performed better than expected in its first year of operation. It, it operated at a loss, yes, but much better than anyone anticipated. We had an expert, we hired experts to tell us what kind of projections we would be looking at for revenue, and it outperformed even the expert's opinion. I've been to a number of events out there, and every time I walk in, it's a beautiful place. There are things that are going to happen out there, I believe, because it's there. The motels are being, our motel, hotel, motel tax keeps going up, it's a draw to this community, and so yes, I very much support, and I'm glad that, that, that the pavilion is there. And I think with its current leadership, it will continue to improve.
Okay, thank you, Greg. Pete? More on this side? Tom?
I do. I guess I'd like, and I might hear this in your closing comments, but I just have one more question, and I'm going to give you one minute to answer it. What's your number-one priority to be mayor? Start with Fred.
My number-one priority is to continue the great work that the council has done and is, is doing, and, and see to it that it continues to grow.
Good, thank you.
My number-one priority as mayor of Sheldon would be to continue the growth, as Fred said, and to, I'm turning it into a two-part question, but...
That's okay.
I do get paid by the word...
You've got one minute.
But another thing would be to engage tho, the younger generation. If we look around this room, I'm one of the youngest here, and that's going to be a problem, and it's going to be a problem that needs to be addressed, and I have some ideas on how to do that, and that's going to be something I push for right away. Thank you.
Thank you. Bob?
As I said in my original remarks, my number-one priority is to work for the citizens of Sheldon, and I will do that and, and to involve as many citizens as possible in the upcoming projects that come forward.
Thank you, Bob.
I stated earlier that cooperation, working together, was my number, my top priority. And I say that because I've seen it work in many ways through the many years I've been I want to provide opportunities for public input, which is why I think we're having these meetings, the three meetings about the franchise fees. That's an issue that needs to be addressed, but I think we can work through it together. We're committed. One thing, I sometimes get the impression is it's that us against them in terms of us as councilmen versus the community or the citizens as a whole. But that's not the case. I'm working here, thinking of myself as a citizen as well. The decisions we make are decisions that are good, what we believe to be good for everyone in this community. Now, there may be some things, sometimes where people are, feel a pinch, it doesn't always go the way they want it to, but by and large, I think what's happened in Sheldon over the last several years is a result of that cooperation I've talked about.
Thank you, Greg. Any further questions on my left?
I would be interested if anyone in the audience has anything to offer.
Okay.
For questions.
Any questions for the audience? We can pass the mic out. Give you your opportunity to ask our four candidates. No takers? And we'll move on. Tom, you have anything further? Okay, we'll start with the closing comments. Greg, we'll start with you in reverse order, and we'll give you three minutes to...
It's not going to take three.
Okay.
But I want you to know how much I really have enjoyed working with you and look forward to continuing work, working with you, whether that's in my role as a councilman or as a mayor. But doing this job has truly been an honor and a privilege, and would appreciate your support.
Okay, thank you.
I like to look at things from a positive standpoint, at the same time be realistic. From a positive standpoint, Sheldon has had good industrial growth in the last 15 years. Maintainer, Rosa Bloom, Kent Feed, Sudbeck, they're all good examples. All of that should benefit our tax base. From a realistic standpoint, my property taxes have doubled in those 15 years, the same property. While at the same period of time, our population has basically remained the same. The pluses and minuses don't balance, especially for our taxpayers. At some point, we just can't afford some things. The tighter the budget is, we find ourselves working with Band-Aids rather than long-term goals. I'm probably not the most positive candidate here, but I just might be the most realistic.
Thank you, Bob.
You guys are in a very unenviable situation.
Thank you.
Here before you, you have people with whom you've served, and you also have others that bring with them a wealth of experience and knowledge. And then you got me. So the question is, what can I bring? Well, I would say that I could bring vision. I feel I'm uniquely qualified to understand the ramifications of a council decision in terms of business growth and development, and as a taxpayer who's seen his own tax bill double in the last four years. I also feel that I am the candidate best equipped to deal with the next generation, the generation that would rather tweet than talk, that would rather snap than shake your hand. And these are the ones that feel their voice is not being heard. So yeah, this is an unenviable decision. Just note this, whether it be today, come November, or in 2021, I'm here, and I won't back down, and I'm ready to take the role as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Wayne. Fred?
I just want to thank you for giving me this opportunity to seek the position of mayor for the greater community of Sheldon. Now that you've listened to the four of us, I would ask that you, if you believe in a higher power, you take a minute to bring this issue to him, and listen to his response, then make your choice. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Now, at this time, the council will deliberate amongst ourselves and will vote. Each council member will be given a ballot, will write the candidate on that ballot, and then the council member will sign the ballot. The city clerk, with the presence of the city attorney, will tabulate the votes, and I believe the vote, candidate has to get three votes to win. Am I correct, Sam and Micah?
That's the procedure you agreed on.
Okay. So I get to this point. Comment, Pete? Question?
Who gets to vote? All four of us?
Four council members. Yeah, four council members. Because they're the ones that have the voting power.
And sign your ballot.
Yes, you have a question? Please, please step up. Dale? Please step up to the microphone. State your name, and then you may ask your question.
I'm Dale Moore, and I just heard this gentleman say it'd be a good idea to ask for wisdom from the higher power, and I'm here to offer a prayer, if you guys would be open to that.
Sure.
Thank you. Lord Jesus, I thank you that you have brought us all here, and as we have to make this important decision right now as to who to elect as mayor, we recognize that you are here and you have all wisdom, and that you love this city more than we love this city. You love us with a perfect love, so I pray... than we love this city. You love us with a perfect love. So I pray that you will give wisdom to these voters as they vote. And we want to give you the praise and honor for how you've led this town. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Dale. So now I guess it's up to the four of us. I want to say thank you for your four candidates stepping forward and willing to take on this new role as a mayor. So on behalf of the citizens and the rest of the council members, I thank you for stepping up to the plate and wanting to be our next mayor.
And I would also add that when we get finished with the decision, you may not be off the hook yet, no matter what.
There may be other opportunities. Micah?
Brad, is it open to comment?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just wanted to address also the candidates who were willing to step forward at this time for this appointment. I'm very encouraged by each and every one of you. You've mentioned that I was elected on an unopposed ballot, and sometimes I kind of carry a yoke about that. But it's because of your interests and your passion that you've shown today was the reason I ran as well. So I appreciate that. So whatever happens here today, I would invite you, if you aren't appointed today, to strongly look at running in November. Because I think each one of you has great benefits to the public in a vote. So I wanted to say that. Thank you.
Okay. We have the tabulated votes.
Two votes for Wayne Barahona, two votes for Greg Gills.
So per the prior agreed procedure that you passed, you had agreed that you would continue to vote until there's someone that receives three votes. At this point...
So is it two out of three falls, or what? Oh, no, never mind.
Couple of options at this point. If there's a candidate or candidates that would like to withdraw from consideration, that's an option. If we want to just simply pass out the ballots and see if there's any changes based on the initial round, that is also an option. But I'll defer to the council to discuss a bit and decide how you want to move forward.
If we are not able to reach an agreement, would it default like any other motions that die to a tie? Would it go default to a special election?
At some point, we could decide that you're not going to reach that number of three. Then if you don't appoint, special election is the default.
Okay. Any other questions we may want to ask the candidates to further our decision amongst us council members? Or do we try to come up with another vote?
I think if it's good with the rest of the councilmen, let's go for one more vote and see if it moves. If it doesn't, then we know our answer. So let's try it one more time.
You two agreeable to that?
Sounds right.
Okay.
And Wayne, you were right. This is not fun. I would also add that we're still within our time period to make an appointment. So if it doesn't pay today, it doesn't trigger a special election necessarily.
Okay.
Unless you affirmatively make the choice.
Count the votes. And the vote?
Greg Gills, three votes. Wayne Barahona, one vote. I'm sorry. Yes, that was right. Three to one.
Three to one. Okay. Do we need a motion to approve?
We would have a motion to affirm, and that would be a roll call. I have a question. What's next?
We have to affirm the appointment effective April 15.
Okay.
And the citizens also have 14 days to petition if they would want a special election. So on the vote, I would make the motion to affirm the appointment of Greg Gills to the mayor of Sheldon effective April 15.
So moved.
Any further discussion? We'll entertain a roll call.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hints?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
And again, I thank you, four candidates. It was a tough decision, and we appreciate you guys stepping forward to be our next mayor. Thank you. We'll take a short break here.
Motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn. Roll call.
Did I get a second?
Sorry.
Yes?
Tom second. Sorry.
Eggers?
Aye.
Hints?
Aye.
Brewster?
Aye.
Hamel?
Aye.
Gills?
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.